Have a call here this morning, this afternoon and uh solid as any guests here today also. And open it up for public hearing. See Mr. Kelly is put in a request. Are you on on zoom, Mr. Kelly? Evidently not. I'm on closed public hearing and uh we're going to deliberate and consider action on the following items. I'm wanting to discuss an appropriate air quality test to be done courthouse, most specifically in the district attorney's office in number one. That's Courtney. Play a piece on that.
Bringing out some pictures. Some of the walls in the offices downstairs. And I'm asking that we have an air quality test done of the whole courthouse, but mostly more specifically the downstairs area and my office, probation, general office. Planning on moving out, but in the meantime, there seems to be a sense of urgency that maybe the public doesn't understand. Maybe some of you haven't, you've seen it in person, but the public generally hasn't. So if anybody's listening in or wants to come look, they can, but I don't think that a lot of people understand the urgency that has been talking about for the last year and a half. For me, the last three years, but especially the last year and a half and even more so in the last six months. And so maybe it'll help people understand why we're grasping at all these different ideas of where can we move? Can we try this trailer? Can we try this? Because I don't think people understand what um what we're up against. And so I'd like to have an air quality test done to all to see exactly what we're working with and help put feet to the fire for anybody else that's coming in or otherwise that help understand why we really need to get some things in place to go forward. And I think Elizabeth, you've reached out to some different companies. Gotten quotes on two different companies for quotes. Do y'all have that in some of you?
No.
There's two quotes for having an air quality test. There's a quote of New Day Homes. They're in Magnolia, Texas. They'll do fourteen tests, a moisture test, infrared imaging, lab results and travel expense. And their cost is nineteen hundred and seventy dollars. So almost two grand. Other company. Air quote for coming coming out, they're gonna do two uh twenty-two samples from all three floors for about a hundred dollars a test. And it's gonna take about sixteen hours to perform the test and do results. Their test is almost six grand. It's fifty-eight hundred. It's a lot more comprehensive and will include all of the floors. Any questions?
Do we have any back? We don't have anybody on third floor, do we?
Uh.
Full time.
Okay.
On just first and second floor.
So it might be something that when we did approve the, if you did approve the the second one, maybe more tailored to exactly how many you needed. If it's if it's quoted per test and so dollars per test, you don't have to be forty-two of them. But either way, I just, I think it's important for the employees who work here and for the public to know exactly what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And so um you see pictures, throw it to the panel, different pictures of the mold, the offices.
So they come in here, they say was unfit, that they're gonna condemn the courthouse.
I don't know exactly what they're saying, but I think there's a chance they could say that it's unfit or hey, you need to. I don't know what kind of urgency they expressed and indicate to you when you talk to them, how that.
Depends on how the test comes back, how high the mold, you know, he is.
It's really, really bad.
Oh, I know. I know.
I know you've seen it in person too, but I don't know that anybody else, because I haven't complained and I tried to just push through to make sure. I know we're working on a plan, but we've been working on it in January. It'll be three years that I've been displaced out of my office and in my conference room. Um to that I've directly had mold, just you know, mere several feet away, handful of feet away from me, this mold. And so I'm just ready to make sure other people know how bad it is.
So would they do the test pretty quick or would it be an extra person?
I believe next week. I think they'll be able to start next week. But that way by you know, by the first of the year, we'll know exactly how urgent it is. But I don't, I don't think anybody should. It is, it's for my people too.
Well, I understand.
We've gotta know what is going on and.
If you hear that duck, it's in all the duck.
Yeah. Well, you know, in a year and a half ago, we talked about needing to have this done, but knowing that we're trying to find a place anyway, and so let's try to save the money. Let's, we're gonna move out anyway. Plans that we've come up with. So at some point. Just summarize that and.
Yeah, hell, yeah.
I, there was stuff like this on my walls when I was pregnant. I've had this, I mean, November was nine years I've been in office and I've had this, but it's been so much worse even the last three years. So that's my request, that we set up and approve having an air quality test done of everywhere, but especially downstairs in my office.
I'd motion that we do the first and second floor because we have Nikki on the second floor. Yes. I mean, you have employees and foot traffic and everybody else. And isn't that where Ms. Simmons is also? Yes.
This little office up here now. Oh, it's uh I'm gonna steal them snacks.
Miss Dan.
Why you think what you just did? I mean.
I think if you wanna do it, you might want to do it all in one water. Yeah.
It's just, well, you know, if it's on the first and second, it's gonna be in the third, okay?
Well, you think so. I mean, we're first here, shouldn't we? We're also.
I mean, we could just rip it off up here, right? We could just rip it off, right?
I don't, I don't know enough about it.
I don't either.
The thoughts behind it and what happens if it comes back bad.
Well, if it's on the first and second, it's gotta be here too. I mean, we could actually just lock the doors up here, right?
I think so.
Where are you? What are they calling?
If it's that bad, they're just gonna shut the courthouse down.
Well. I don't want to know, but in the meantime, if that's what they say, I'm.
Um, I'm just. Is it possible?
Anytime you put people's life in danger, which is a possibility of, um especially in their health, uh I think it would be immediate attention. And uh Ms. Courtney and I have talked about this uh ever since I've been here, been on the own project. But we never paid attention to it, even though it's been in a complex stage. And so she's, she's really got concerned. She's asked me to put this on here and ask for a couple of different quotes. And I, I, I don't know anything about this uh Mark White. Uh I have talked to the other gentleman uh pretty extensively and he, 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 he acts like he talks. He knows what he's doing. Uh I know he's a little high. I just slip up y'all, whatever y'all want.
If, if, if I can say, I would suggest that the court approve maybe that second fender up to a certain amount and then let the judge kind of tailor it to how many specifically, you know, the test, if we can lower that number based on test, give him a little bit of wiggle room. But maybe approve like up to six grand um just to give him something to work with and figure out exactly how many tests he needs when he come, the guy may come out and say, I don't really need that many. The space is closed or whatever it is. So I would suggest.
What else was there from a phone conversation?
The judge's office received us from a phone, since they're under ten.
Yeah, square footage or anything, you know, what they base in their quote on.
Well, I think uh the initial conversation I had with Mr. West, which was a couple of years ago, uh he, he did know the square footage and he actually, when we called him, when was that, last week's? Uh he remembered all the conversation. Oh. But I did give him the square footage and number rooms and that type of stuff, but, but this one here is new day. Okay.
Judge, uh Judge Greer here had a good point that the basement could potentially be. And so, you know, it's really four. So with the basement, you might need all twenty-two.
Exactly right because we have water. Intrusion down there all the time.
Yeah.
One thing that they also want to do and the gentleman, the second gentleman um wants to check outside. And so he's adding a little extra. He seems like he's more work than the other gentleman. Mr. White doesn't seem like he's gonna do as much work. The other gentleman seems like he knows more about the courthouse and wants to also check around the perimeter of the courthouse and just get a little idea of what's going on.
Your motion was what?
I guess that's making my motion uh let it be known up to six thousand dollars. And I agree with Judge Greer about we should check the basement also, I mean, and the perimeter of it.
Up to six thousand.
Correct.
Here a second.
We're gonna get the money for. Don't remember that.
We got uh you have a contingency fund that uh you draw from. And uh I'm, I'm not aware exactly how much is left in it, but I'm sure there's some. Well, it's healthy reason. He needs that to do it. You gonna say it, Mr.?
Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Benson, that we approved our quality test done on the courthouse uh with the. Laying it here, building air quality incorporated uh up to six thousand dollars. And any more discussion? Uh on favor, sir?
Uh.
Same size, both. Fair and fast. And the duty to discuss an appropriate approved resolution for Texas Department of Transportation for Plum Creek on County Road twenty eighty-nine. Mr. Pombin.
This is just, this is a Tech dot off-road bridge system uh twenty eighty-nine, which we reference as Plum Creek. Uh it's a, it's a standard uh Tech dot resolution that we do on most Oliver bridges. The only thing different about this one here is I'm gonna have to have uh forty-two thousand and three hundred dollars of in-kind work done by the county to be able to uh get this bridge done by Tech Dot. Uh the text, the bridge is needed and uh they're gonna give it to me over three years. I'm gonna have to do that much work in three years. And I've already sent in the, the two projects that I was gonna do for the in-kind service. And if any one of the other commissioners or county does any kind of covert work or drainage work that is coming out of their budget, it could also go towards my in-kind late uh labor for the county. Okay. I would ask y'all to keep that in mind if you would. And I know we all have something to do some culverts and bridges and stuff like that. So it's just a standard resolution. Uh I just had to promise them that. Me and the judge met with them and before I did, we did not know that until we sat down with them, met with them and told them that our funds probably for this year wasn't gonna allow me to be able to pay twenty-two thousand dollars out of it. And uh once we told them that, they went to anxious. I don't think they came, they just brought a new way of doing it, a new way of business. But anyway, that's what that's for. And I think it's supposed to start in May of twenty thirty, if I'm not bad.
Depending how long it, that's gonna be open for. For two years or? And just one year for the, for the, three years.
They're gonna, they're gonna allow me three years.
Okay, that's what I was.
To do in-kind.
Wait a minute, they gonna start the bridge?
They gonna start the bridge in twenty-three, get it right.
Yeah.
I will have to do some in-kind service in next year and a following next year and a following next year. I'd do it equivalent of forty. And I've already got them projects and he's already looked at them and Andrew's already okayed them. So I've already got them down in his office. They're just trying to get the paperwork done before the end of the year.
Yeah.
And where they can start it for next year.
I make that motion, that that resolution from Tech Dot.
Second. Wish me the best, Mr. Benson, second, Mr. White, we approve the resolution from uh Tech Dot for Plum Creek on uh County Road twenty eighty-nine. Any more discussion? But if he knows, you, you gonna have one coming up also Hunter's Creek.
Yeah.
Uh I probably have the same resolution, so this will give you a little experience in, in going forward if you got a match.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Not on favor, sir?
Uh.
Same size, both. Fair and fast.
Thank you.
And number three is discussing probably approve the expenditure of ARPA funds and the amount of nothing exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for payment for additional projected payroll to the remainder of twenty-two, Ms. Ginger.
Okay, I'm asking for the two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, I'd ask for eight hundred thousand. And I'd ask the original thing for three hundred thousand. Well, I went over about three hundred and thirty-six hundred dollars. So as of the last payroll. Yeah, for December the first through the sixteenth, this last payroll that we had, I had a hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents left out of that eight hundred thousand. So when I did the next, no, that was at the end of November, I'm sorry. The next payroll for December the fifteenth was one oh six, four twelve, ninety-three, which, which leaves me to pay the last payroll of the year, the fifty thousand, eight, eight six dollars and sixty cents. So I spoke with the judge about it and we, I was gonna ask for three hundred and fifty thousand. He said, well, if you've got fifty thousand left, just ask for two fifty. But this month, because I'm gonna see what really is gonna be is because the insurance goes, went up this time. And uh we're gonna be paying out a lot of people also, the ones that are leaving. We have two deputies, our deputy dispatch are leaving. And then we've got some other people leaving, so.
Gonna be another?
I'm thinking it is a.
Well, that payout, it, it eats up a lot of money.
Yeah, she's already projected about what that payout is and we made her have been in that conversation.
Payoffs could be about.
It should actually be left over.
Okay.
It's gonna be about twenty thousand of the payouts.
So we end up using about a million dollars there to crack.
Yes.
Even payroll.
And two, end is paying that eight hundred thousand, you know, we had all those elections and run off. And then I paid, it was, I don't know, I don't remember how much, sixty thousand or something, just for the election. And that's included in my eight hundred thousand of that, so.
Well, I guess we're trying to get on it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have near that much budget for this year.
Fifteen thousand.
Well, it's, it's kind of hard to budget, budget that I'm.
I know, so I, you know, this time it was the primary, the in-march and get them run off to the, the one in November. She averaged, you know, because she had to have what, two, three people at each home, so. Make it thirteen odd an hour.
Your motion.
Like that motion.
Let's say it. Hey, go easy.
Wish me the best, Mr. White, say, Mr. Benson, we uh authorize Ms. Ginger to uh have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of ARPA fund uh now that exceeded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for finishing out the payroll for twenty twenty-two. Any discussion? Not on favor, sir?
Uh.
Same size, both. Fair and uh. Number four is discussing appropriate approved proposal of this by Mr. Ben Hancock, the Hancock Real Estate and from Newton County, our individual organization, their title on one hundred and twenty-eight acres, more or less uh here. That's, we brought up here the other day and uh I think we've got some unknown heirs. And so Mr. Ben, I'm gonna let, turn it over to you and you explain to the court what you propose.
Judge, thank you for your time. Court, I'd just like to uh say that Morgan Surveying has already done a preliminary uh survey of the property. As the judge and I discussed when they did the preliminary, uh they had to put a seal on it or stamp and I'm not authorized to give it out. It's gotta be paid full, that to the court. Uh the preliminary research from Morgan Survey identified what we already suspected there was at least fifteen, as many as twenty, uh heirs, heirs owners that are involved in this track. This track is um technically owned by the county and by fifteen or twenty individuals jointly. It's called undivided interest. There's about a sixty, forty interest in this track. County's on the track since the nineteen fifties and they haven't ever cleared the title. So for about sixty to seventy years, the title's been clouded and to this very day, it's still clouded. And in order to get this track back on the tax rolls, get these individuals playing correctly, what they're supposed to pay, and get the county's ownership established so that the county can then survey out their correct ownership, sell their ownership, you're gonna have to have what's called chains of title done on these individual tracks that are outstanding. You, you currently own an undivided interest in this entire project that includes fifteen to twenty people that are involved in the property. So you're not making a decision to sell anything, you're just making a decision to clear the title. Now, I met with, there's only currently one company in Newton County that offers uh title research, Garland Smith abstract. When I discussed it with them, um I talked to a gentleman named Joe Matthews, who's a part owner of Garland Smith. He uh, he said that they were real busy right now and that they wanted to defer this to a third party. So um I've done change the title for twenty years. Um I'm very, very experienced at doing terrible and terrible titles. And uh I'm submitting to y'all that, that I could do, help you create chains of title for each of these tracks involved in this project for a hundred and five dollars an hour, and that's with a five thousand dollar retain. Now, um the county's welcome to shop around. Your attorneys wanna do it in-house, that's fine with me. Uh we'll have to go into Garland Smith and pay them, use their abstract plant. I have an assistant helping me. And then if we can go to Newton County occasionally and pull deeds over there, if the county wouldn't charge us, that would be beneficial. It's a dollar a copy there. Once I get these projects, uh at least five or six of them done, I can bring them to you before the project's complete, let you look at them, review them, decide if you like them. We can, you'll discuss them and then from there, we could go forward before we did the entire project. I would much rather do it slow, methodical, open, understanding with everyone. Because uh you're not capable of selling this interest in this track unless you sell it undivided. And that means that's gonna include all fifteen to twenty heir, not heirs, but owners in the property firm. That's what I'm, I'm wanting to establish, that we're not selling property. We're just strictly doing chains of title to identify ownership so that once the court approved it, you could approach the individual owners on a case-by-case basis. Now, I, I would be surprised if these people, once this is a public hearing, don't, don't seek legal counsel. Uh I'm not a good attorney, I'm a real estate broker, but um the county could retain outside legal counsel if your in-house counsel does choose to do it. But I'm happy to work with y'all. I understand the proceedings. I'm an attorney, but I understand the proceedings and, and these individual families that have been in this property for fifty or sixty years will probably seek legal aid. So just be aware, be aware that that, that will be coming. It could come tonight, it could come next year, but it will be coming. You wanna be prepared for that.
Have they got legal, do they legally own it?
The county has an undivided interest commissioner. We don't know exactly how much, because no one has done the chain of title. We haven't been furnished to chain the title. My company was hired to sell it. We went out there and put a sign on it and the neighbors came forward and said, you cannot put a sign on this property if we own this property. I've met with your sheriff, your sheriff said, once he understands the project as far as the commissioner's court, he'll fully cooperate to protect the county's interest. But right now, we're adverse. We have adverse possession. So we can't put signs on it, we can't market it, we can't sell it until the title is established. Somehow you're able to get chains of title and then establish their legal entity, so interest that you're gonna be conveying to somebody who purchased that interest.
I would be able to sell it without cleared title. And uh there's been one on there since nineteen fifty-eight up to what date, uh collecting no taxes from undivided or un um or any interest in that piece of property.
What's gonna happen to the family that say they got ownership to it? Who's ownership?
No, 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 the county, the county commissioner's court, the county judge, once we have a chain of title established, you would meet and discuss how you wanna proceed with them either getting a petition deed and them owning that outright or you make it available to them, you know, what interests that you're willing to convey to them. Because they own an undivided interest and the county owns an undivided. Now, the appraisal district may wanna be involved because they may wanna have a say so about taxes eroded. I'm not a licensed appraiser. I don't work at the appraisal district. But I know that there are potentially issues that need to be discussed as a commissioner's court with y'all fully informed as to each of these tracks identified. But I wouldn't recommend selling anything or being adverse to any of the ownership that's current there. I would work peacefully with all the current ownership peacefully. So that you have established who owns what and work a systematic, methodical, weapon out that goes by the penal code so that everyone is successful and, and a, and a good outcome. I think this would take six to nine months if it was done real quickly too. More like eighteen months to two years, considering there's probably gonna be other, people are gonna hire attorneys that are living there and they're gonna become very advantageous. That's just normal. Start trying to make something up that hadn't been straight in seventy.
But my question to you would be this, a hundred and five dollars an hour. It might go on and on, just one track?
No, uh we could probably do each track from between eight, fifteen hours worth of work, probably closer to eight. But we just do three to five tracks. I'd submit them to y'all. You get to ask more questions. You get to say yes or no, we move forward. We don't move forward, we just leave it on the road as the way it is. I've already got about thirty hours of my time in this project, meeting with your commissioners, your commissioner's court, your shared, your attorneys and everybody else, and I can't even sell it. I can't, there's no way anybody can sell it currently, so.
Did check with Margie about the undivided interest, uh how come they wouldn't pay taxes? And she said the reasons that undivided interest wasn't is because uh it's in the county's name, hold it. And the county don't pay taxes. So that would be something, uh be uh discussion. Uh what their fortune might be. Although they wasn't saying a tax statement, so that's probably a legal title there or they have to pay back taxes or that type of stuff.
Courtney gonna get involved with this, we're gonna get outside help.
I would say that we would assist, but we would need to get outside help on the, I think we would have a. I would say that we would assist, but we would need to get outside help on the, probably we would have the time to take on a project like that.
All right, any question from, from Ben? Well, what action would the court like to take?
I would like to see us move forward. Who would take? Tell them we're gonna straighten it up. Sixty years, you would think we need to straighten it up. Well, you've got equity in the property, but you can't sell the equity half. I don't know, other than what to say, other than you have equity and you're gonna have a margin of profit, but it's undetermined until we start doing a lot of research.
Absolutely.
Nobody's furnished me files or data on it. Uh, if you have files and data on it, it'd be a lot easier. But we had to order a survey just to get to the point to where we are now and then we have to have files and data to move forward to sell what your undivided interest is. I know you have an undivided interest, it's gonna be between fifty to forty percent, maybe as much as sixty percent of the hundred and twenty-eight acres. That'll create value, but we can't give them clear title, we can't survey it out, and we can't gain access to it to show it until we deal with the people that currently live there that have an undivided interest with the county.
There's not much frontage to that property, you know, is it? Not much highway frontage or any kind of?
Oh, I'm, I don't know if there's any highway frontage, uh, but maybe some county road frontage.
Well, what I'm looking at is, uh, you know, the current value of property, say if we ended up with fifty percent of it, that's, uh, what, a hundred and sixteen acres, that's a fifty-six acre, uh, or sixty-four acre. Uh, um, the value of sixty-four acres, you know, are we gonna exceed that with all these lawyer fees and different fees and whatnot? I mean, long as we don't exceed it, it's, it's, it's okay, but, I mean, with the current value, I can see easily how we can exceed uh, a hundred thousand dollars or?
Oh, no, no, your expenses shouldn't run. Your, your survey bill's around ten or twelve, I'm not working for the surveyor, I don't represent the surveyor, I haven't seen the invoice, but I would just think it's not over twelve. And then this legal work and clearing the title, it's hard to estimate. I, I can do the first phase for you and let you look at that, but you should maintain a, a large equity position. I'd say between sixty and seventy percent equity. After you pay all the expenses, that you're gonna net back your expenses and then get an equity position of sixty or seventy percent of just around number a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand minimum.
And put, and they put it back on tax roll?
Yes, and put back on the tax rolls correctly all those accounts. I don't work for the appraisal district, I don't represent them, but I'll turn this information over to them. And I'm sure that decent counsel, which I can recommend to you with Courtney's advice and blessing and decent legal counsel for the minimal amount can take all these chains of title and get with the appraisal district and turn all those correctly into the right taxing accounts. And that's gonna generate revenue for years and years to come. But you've got a real strong equity position. I wouldn't even be standing in front of you if you weren't gonna have an equity position.
How many more pieces of property we got like that?
Well, uh, we've got, uh, one, it's, it's contested one down on forty-one oh-two, is it? Um, but, you know, he just contested it verbally and, and threw a weapon on him from his own position. But there's no lawyer been involved whatsoever. And he hadn't produced any chain of title that was, uh, and I've actually got an opinion on that title. And the, the opinion is that we do own it. So, uh, I'm not saying all our, all our properties are a hundred percent. No. But at this time, uh, I think we're losing a lot of revenue, uh, to the county because we're not collecting any taxes and it's in the, in the county's name.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
I think it's, I think it's high time to just step up to the plate and, uh, do what's right and try to get back on tax roll, even though it does cost a little money to, uh, clear title.
Yeah. But I want us to pursue other neighborhoods and other properties, what I'm saying. I don't want that to be the only one in Newton County that, that we were pursuing. Because, I mean, you know, I have some representation, I have the.
I, I, I agree.
I don't want, uh, I mean, I, I just want us to, you know, be level across the board, whatever we do and
Yeah, we're not.
I realize that we probably have more equity in that one, the reason you, you chose that one, but I'm just saying. Uh, we know how politics and all this other stuff is going on in the county and I don't want to, uh, you know, look like, uh, we're just picking certain areas with low-income people. That's, that's what I'm, my concern, I.
No, and, and he, he just said it, you know, people that's lived out there, uh, we're not gonna throw them off their.
I understand.
In fact, I would, I would entertain the motion, uh, if I was still here, to even give them the three or four acres or five acres, whatever. In, in my opinion.
That would be the best way to do it. You gotta have legal descriptions and testimonials and surveys.
Right.
But no, I'm not for throwing them over out of this property, you know, and cause confusion, but if we do have an interest, you know, I, I wanna know where my interest lies.
Right, right. But it's gonna force him to go out and find an alternative to, to, you know, protect their interest or whatever. Of course, I realize that if they had any fan taxes, but if somewhere, maybe investing in the quality of the property or that kind of thing, upgrades and whatnot, well, they have investments and, and, uh, you know, it kind of puts it in a situation where you either give it up or you gotta go get your attorney and, you know. I'm just saying, you know, looking at the whole ball of wax from a distance. Uh, but yeah, uh, I, I do agree that we need to, all these properties that we're not, you know, that we're not, uh, collecting taxes. Oh, yeah, certainly, we need to find, figure out how to get, uh, before we receive the taxes.
Question, is that true same property that, um, the, the neighbors who have an interest, an undivided interest, that they cleared the timber on it?
I've only been working on this about ninety days, I'm not familiar with timber being cut on anything.
I was thinking the timber's been cut off of it, too, by the people who are occupying it.
On that one twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Been cleared.
Been cut by those people. That's the county from, from county has a true interest.
I'll be, I was over there last week, he's clear. I went up to Brook's house, I went down the pipeline, I went in my truck, pick up there. Going to that drawing, we saw his place is right in the middle of it, right?
Yeah, yeah, trailer house.
Yeah, I see it, yeah. I went up to his trailer house, made the right turn, went down the pipeline, down into the property that we were, were talking.
Well, he, I don't think Ms. Court was talking about recently, but, uh, through the seventy years, you, you, you would think fine trees would be like.
Well, well, I hear you. But I know there's some big oaks and stuff in there now, that's where I, my eyes are not fooling me.
Yeah, I think timber's been cut off.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe state that. Okay.
Are you a motion to that effect or? Are you a want proceed?
I made it, man.
Here a second.
Second. Yes, timing is, uh, not a little issue, uh, because, but have, have we gotta put money up this year before this year again? Is that, uh, five thousand dollars? It's your debt, it doesn't say.
Well, it's a dangerous administration, so. I'd like to work for y'all, but if I can't, that's fine, too. I just need to get paid when I work.
That's one more time. Here a second. Here another second, uh, number four, uh, twice, like a second.
Well, he stopped what he did, right?
Yes, sir.
I won't be involved in selling a hundred and twenty-eight acres and I'll submit the termination and I'll listen to y'all next week, or this week. Because I can't actively, I market or sell that property, there's no way. You don't know what you own, Commissioner.
Well, we just spent twelve thousand dollars.
Get a survey.
You would think we would wanna get some of our money back.
Uh, we're happy to help you, but.
Oh, I'm just saying, I'm just talking out loud.
Yes, sir. I, I wouldn't know what to sell or how to sell it with all these people involved. It, it would be an absolute nightmare and I wouldn't wanna put the courts through that, that's not my clue. I, I work slow and methodically and very transparently, so. Thank you, Judge, thank you, Court.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, number five, discussing, uh, well, some discussion and the presentation from Mr. Ben, Ben Hancock, uh, and Mr. Mark Thomas, he is an auction, uh, auctioneer that would take some properties that, that, uh, we have and I'm gonna let him give his presentation.
That's what we're talking about, I do, and I understand there's thirty, forty, fifty properties owned by the county. Uh, we, we, we're a real estate auction company, it's what we do. Uh, we charge the buyers a commission. We, we wanna be in the market thirty or forty-five days, um, and we'll sell these properties individually. Uh, we'll bring you the signed contract and then y'all can approve the sale. So it's not an absolute sale. Uh, the way we advertise our properties is no minimum bid, but final bid subject to the seller's approval, we're subject to the court's approval. And, uh, we charge the, we pay the realtors, we charge a ten percent buyer premium. Buyer pays that, we pay the buyer's realtor out of that. And so, and the marketing cost and all that comes out, we'll talk about that if you choose to go forward. Pretty simple process. Um, it's, it's, it, it, and it, it's just as cheap to sell forty properties as it is five properties. We, we've gotta advertise and so it's not a matter of, uh, economies of scale really work in your favor here. Uh, the, everything sells online. Uh, Ben would be involved in showing the properties, uh, and it, it, the way our system works is that if someone bids in the last five minutes, it extends five minutes, so no one can go in and snipe it. Uh, it's a very, very efficient way. And like I said, we'll come back, uh, with, uh, with contracts. We require them to put up ten percent, a non-refundable earnest money. And then the decision is, is your all per track, uh, on if you wanna sell it or not. But it gets, obviously generates some money and it gets stuff back on the tax rolls as well, so. You really can, you should be able to harvest a significant amount of money and then have taxpayers on the tax rolls.
Yeah, I, I just brought, uh, Mr. Mark in and to give his presentation and for y'all to interact with him, what questions. Uh, there'd be no action took today, uh, because we don't know how many properties we've talked about. Uh, but I have identified a lot of them since I've been there. And, but they'd have to be actually went through individually and make sure we didn't try to auction off, uh, property that was bought by federal funds. So, but then probably would have to be actually identified.
Well, you would have to survey, you only have to go through the sign claims, you just went through the seven.
Well, let's talk about that, because that's a good, that's a good point. What I would suggest is put the survey costs on the buy. Now, that may cause an extended, it may cause an extended closing, but, uh, one thing that's really interesting about the auction process, guys, if you'll just tell the buyers what you're gonna do, they'll do it. It, it, it works exactly the opposite if we're trying to sell, you know, uh, Ben and I are trying to, we're involved in a project out in West Texas and, you know, we know what they want for, so we're gonna offer them less. But in an auction, you gotta figure out what the most is you can get and still have value. So it kind of flips back to the buyer saying, you gotta decide. But if you're not, you know, I, I think the responsibility of the county would be title insurance. But I put the survey cost back on the buyer, because I'd rather extend closing than incur those costs. But I, I think title insurance, and again, as we go through the process and you identify the, the, the property, I don't care if it's a city lot or a tract of timber or whatever, if, uh, if, if something doesn't make sense, we drop it out of the process. And, you know, we, he was telling me about this, this federal land. You know, there's multiple safety nets in the real estate world, it is even if we miss one with our eyes, when it goes to closing, the title company's gonna say, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, this, you can sell this. And we'll have those caveats in, in the terms and conditions that says the county's protected against, we're only selling what we have the rights to sell. So, you know, but again, I know this is just information, but give you my card and you've talked to Ben, be glad to talk to you. I mean, we do this a lot, uh, of all kinds of different properties, but it's a, it's an easy process, so. Glad to drill down on anything that you think.
And, and my main, my main goal was to try to get some of this, uh, this non-productive, non-revenue land back in the hands of people that will put it in production and put it on revenue, back to revenue. And, uh, I know, I know now, changing administrations, uh, the next administration won't know what I've done if they don't go with research, unless y'all uh, maybe bring it to the attention that, uh, so-and-so donated five acres to the county. It's not on payroll. So, uh, I was, that, that, my concern with Mr. Mark was to help me and try to identify these projects or a parcel of land that, uh, could be put back on. And this would be an easy, uh, easier and a faster way and it'd be online. Uh, I guess maybe through the MLS also, maybe.
Sure.
And so, especially if y'all ever been on, uh, online, uh, that people all over the world, you know, auction, bidding on this stuff and, uh, so it could bring overvalued money, really.
Well, I'd just like to have a list of the forty properties we're gonna sell, like see them identified before we put them on the auction.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, that would definitely be done before we ever, in the, in the kind of contract or anything. It'd be brought back to the commissioner's court and identify each and every property. It is, this is just a question that, uh, I brought him in that would open up and entertain the ideal that, that this may be a good process in which to get away, get away, you, or risk some of these properties.
Like I said, it puts the survey on the buyers.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, you can, you can do a lot of stuff when you actually negotiate. Um, you don't have to take all the responsibility on the county. You know, if they want it bad enough, yeah, they, they do a lot of that. And, uh, I went as far in some of my days, is them splitting the closing costs, far as I go.
Absolutely, we can do that. Matter of fact, we can have them pay for the title policy. There's all kinds of ways to do that. And, and what's interesting, guys, and I, yeah, the, the buyer wants to buy this, all buyers, and, and most buyers think they're smarter than sellers, right, which is to our benefit. But, yeah, if, if we wanna put closing costs, we wanna put title insurance back on them, wanna put survey costs back on it, if we'll just be very transparent, forthright, saying, county's not spending any money. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna guarantee you clear title and that's all we're gonna guarantee. And we'll work with, working on that, what we, with some of the nuances that we've got to make sure that we don't wanna obligate you to sell if you don't wanna sell. And if for some reason we found a glitch in the title, uh, we're not, we're not, we're not going forward. So, easy process, yeah, and we know that Judge Weeks is about to be gone and this is just kinda plant the seed for y'all to think about this and say, well, wait a minute, why, why wouldn't we do this, go forward basis? But Ben would listen on his MLS, would be there, will pay the realtor the buy side, they're full three percent, so they're being treated fairly. Nobody will be mistreated in the process.
Well, questions? Are you, look? Are you a motion to adjourn?
I'm motion.
Here a second. A second. Motion to adjourn, second, that, uh, we adjourn at, uh, twenty-three minutes after break.